Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. The notice requirement provided for the open public meetings law has been satisfied. Notice properly given said notice having been transmitted to the Courier News on January twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, as well as posting on the city's website. Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Davis.
Present.
Councilman McKenna.
Present.
Councilman McCray.
Present.
Councilwoman Mills Ransom.
Present.
Councilwoman Welch.
Present.
Vice President Good.
Present.
Council President Hockaday.
Present.
We have all members present in a corner.
Thank you. We will first move to consideration of public hearing, second reading, and final passage. Clerk, please read MC twenty-two-one dash twenty-four by title and certify that it has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC twenty-two-one twenty-four is an ordinance authorizing sitting of certain cannabis-related businesses within the city, amending the land use and development ordinance and the T O D D South redevelopment plan and the T O and the North Avenue redevelopment plan with respect thereto in establishing certain regulations and requirements for cannabis uses. It is hereby certified that notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one.
Floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. As customary, hit the hand icon to be heard.
If you dialed in with a cellphone, it is star nine to raise your hand as well. There is no one with their hand raised.
Okay, may I have a motion to close public hearing on the ordinance?
Oh.
Second.
Okay, may I have a motion? Are there any questions from council members? Let's see that comment.
I say someone just raised their hand now. Would you allow me to allow them to speak?
No. Yes, no, considering we didn't have anyone. I would like to allow the public to speak if they've somebody raised their hand, go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Tracy Walker. I actually put a question in the chat. I had not been made, well, I was not aware of this and wanted to have a little bit more detail with regards to the proposal. That's up for consideration, please.
So, Mr. Clerk, can you? Can you put your email perhaps in the chat? We'll have the clerk email you a copy of the ordinance. It is posted on the website as well with the materials where you can look at the entire ordinance.
Right, this is simply a public hearing for the public to give their comments regarding the ordinance on second reading at this time. And I will provide my email to that public, to the member of the public who spoke.
You know, I will add, you know, with respect to this ordinance that the state still has regulations that they have not come out with in terms of entirely how this is going to look in Plainfield. We're doing what is required in order to take advantage of the law at this point. But I anticipate that there'll be much more legislation in the city with respect to how marijuana looks, legal marijuana looks in the city, also related to consumption and so forth, where, you know, there's no consumption now. But that, from what I understand, that's not the intent for there to be no consumption. It's just that the state hasn't provided the requisite guidance for us to fill out all the remainder of that legislation. And we expect that from the state regulatory commission, you know, probably within the next month or two. And at that point, we'll come back to you all and we will surely pass some additional legislation. This is just so we don't miss that window because if we don't pass this legislation now, I think counsel indicated it'd be like five years before we can even pass an ordinance that would allow us to tax marijuana, you know, so we could possibly even miss out on revenue. So it's important to do what we're doing at this time and then it'll fill out even more. But I encourage everyone to take a look at the ordinance and so and thank you, Mr. Clerk, for sending that to one of the member of the public. Had some difficulty. Okay, may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilman McKenna. Councilman McCray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills Ransom.
Yes.
Councilwoman Welch.
Yes.
Vice President Good.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
This ordinance has been adopted on second reading.
Thank you. Clerk, please read MC twenty-two-one dash twenty-five and certify that it has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC twenty-two-one twenty-five is an ordinance of the city of Plainfield and the county of Union establishing a cannabis transfer tax and cannabis user accordance with the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Enforcement Assistance and Market Police Modernization Act. It is hereby certified that notice of the public hearing on this ordinance is published in the Courier News on July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, floor is now open to any member of the public that would like to speak on this ordinance.
There's no one with their hand raised.
Hearing and seeing none, may I have a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance?
Moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Hearing and seeing none, public hearings now closed. May I have a motion? Are there any questions or comments from council members? Hearing and seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage? And if adopted, shall be published as required by law.
So moved.
Okay, Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmembers Davis.
Yes.
McKenna.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Mills Ransom. Councilman Welch.
Yes.
Vice President Good.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
That is unanimous. This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Thank you. Clerk, please read MC twenty-two-one dash twenty-six and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC twenty-two-one twenty-six, the ordinance to amend Chapter eleven Personnel Article twelve, separation from service and disciplinary action, section eleven twelve, layoff. It is hereby certified that the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. Okay, Ms. Burwinkle, name and address for the record.
Hi, Mary Burwinkle, seventeen eighty-five Sleepy Hollow Lane. I am disappointed that the mayor has resurrected this issue of cutting our governing body, the city council, out of the layoff process. You may recall that he raised this in March of two thousand nineteen and dropped it after public outcry about faulty reasoning for the change, among other things. The ordinance, the layoff ordinance, has been on the books since nineteen sixty-nine and says at subsection A, whenever there is a lack of work or a lack of funds requiring a reduction in the number of employees in a department of city government, the required reduction shall be made in such job classification or classifications as the council may designate in consultation with the mayor. Both branches of government were meant to be involved by the plain language of the ordinance, which does not conflict with the charter, in my opinion. This is, also in my opinion, a power grab on the part of the mayor. If this passes, he can make layoff decisions without public notice or involvement of the public at council meetings. And I think everyone should keep in mind that this mayor was council president in two thousand thirteen. If the then mayor had tried to get this passed to two thousand thirteen council, it is my opinion that he would have seen it as a power grab on her part and fought it. I hope the council will not give up an ordinance that honors separation of powers and public transparency this easily. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Smith is next. Name and address for the record. Unmute yourself, Ms. Smith.
Start again. My name is Cynthia Smith. My address is fourteen thirty-one Coolidge Street, Plainfield, New Jersey. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Plainfield Municipal Employees Association and not just a private citizen. I just want to kind of echo what Ms. Burwinkle had said, that this ordinance had come about two years ago in two thousand nineteen. With the exception of two other council persons, all the other council members were present at that meeting. At that time, Council President Steve Hockaday, who was the vice president, he spoke in opposition of it, and so did our vice president, very good. I just don't see what happened from two years ago that tonight would have you guys sitting and changing your vote and changing your minds because we brought an attorney to that meeting who was going to speak to this matter that we paid money to do research. And with Plainfield having a special charter, the charter is put in place because they didn't want to follow what every other municipality had in place. But Plainfield is not, as it was said at the last meeting, the only town that does it this way. That is not true. I checked several towns and they do go before the city council before they do the layoffs, okay? So giving up your power just because someone says things like, because you're going to be too emotionally attached or involved or, in other words, like not having the guts to do it if you have to do a layoff. We went through two layoffs before, but we lost substantial amount of employees and it was because the money was not there in the budget. So if you guys oversee the budget and you, you know, vote on matters that is presented to you to carry out that budget throughout that year, what is the problem now or what is different from you looking at a layoff plan and seeing if it's viable or not or seeing if it's another way that it can be done? Because in two thousand nineteen, when they had put up for the dispatchers to be laid off, we did go to the city administrator at that time. We had several meetings with him and we had worked it all out. But he refused to even want to work it out that way. And so that's why they didn't get to outsource the dispatchers. It's not because we didn't meet with them and have a proper dialogue and that we didn't come up with a good way of handling it. It was because the city just didn't want to do it. So to say that, you know, oh, the police need to go back and find another way to handle that. No, we had sat with them and they were going to be able to outsource. It's just that they didn't want to properly negotiate with the union, which is what it is that they should do. It should always be a dialogue back and forth. And city council, you should keep that open, that you all are involved in that dialogue back and forth to make sure that services stay the same for the citizens of Plainfield or close to it as possible. And that's the only thing I want to say tonight.
Mr. Richard Wyatt, name and address for the record.
Yes, Richard Wyatt, eight twenty-six Wildsworth Avenue. Good evening, Council President and esteemed council members. I would just like to come to you tonight. I know that we spoke before at the last meeting and I spoke to some of your person. And if you can just explain to the people why you feel as though that this change needs to be made. I know that we did, we have a special charter that we have been operating with for many years. And so why a separation of power now? So if you can just eloquently, like you did, the cannabis ordinance, if you could just explain to the people the reason that you see why this should be done. And if you believe that there is no vendetta, my question is why now? Why are we doing this now and if the city is thriving as much as we say that we do now? Completely understand that you want to have a working relationship with the administration of the mayor. That's how you get things done. But this one, I just do not understand. So I'm asking if you can just take time to explain to the residents here in Plainfield and many employees why you would like to give up the power that you have where the checks and balances are created for a reason and we just skip over that and give it directly to the mayor. Not saying that the mayor would fumble this or you guys would fumble it, but we don't know who the next people in the future would be sitting in all of these seats. So if you could just explain, I appreciate that. Thank you for your time. And I hope the council seriously considers the impact if this amendment is approved. Thank you.
Mrs. Campbell, name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening. Wilma Campbell, fourteen oh four Highland Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. Good evening, council. I'm appealing to all of you, Joylet, Ashley, Mr. Hockaday, very good, Stacy Welch. I'm appealing to you on a level related to what is right, what is good for all of the people. I just, you know, I reflect back to how things have gone full circle. I remember a time when our now current mayor was the CFO in Roselle. Everybody acknowledged she was doing a good job, but the political establishment wanted his job eliminated. The position, that position was being filled by somebody who was doing supposedly a good job, but for political reasons, they wanted to remove him. That was wrong then. That's wrong now. Taking away people's employment destroys their dignity, their self-worth, their pride, and their independence. I believe that the city employees are doing a phenomenal job and especially after just getting over COVID and all that went along with that. I'm asking you, I'm appealing to you council members to consider the fact that these are people with families. You talk about efficiency. I remember during the political campaign that we just ended through the primary, the mayor was talking about the job, he was the job creator. Now he wants to be the job eliminator. Think back on when your boots were in that saddle where people were coming after you for your job. And it wasn't right then and it's not right now. I'm hoping that the council will consider voting no on this because it's wrong, it's bad government. I think it's very important for the mayor to have a check and balance system. And that is the role that the council should follow. So I'm appealing to you. I know many of you on an individual basis. And I think that you have the ability to do the right thing. And I hope that you will do that by voting no on this resolution tonight. Thank you. Political capital. Don't lose.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Ms. Damron, name and address for the record.
Deloitte Damron, one twenty-seven Netherwood Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. Good evening, council. God bless each and every one of you. I just want to appeal to your humanity on tonight. Think about yourself and put yourselves into shoes. We're in the middle of a pandemic right now. And for anyone to lose their job, to lose their home, to lose their resources, lose anything is affecting not only them but their family as well. So I really hope that you really reconsider and vote no on this because we definitely do not want this pandemic to continue. We certainly do not want to hurt people and injure people. It's all about doing the right thing right now. And this pandemic is not over yet. And so maybe this can be considered somewhere in the future down the road. But please, let's think about other people and not just be selfish. Thank you so much and you all have a great evening.
You do the same. Anyone else with their hand raised?
There is no one else. Oh, wait.
Real quick, Council President, could, can IT repeat the instructions for people that call in to raise their hand?
So if you have called in or dialed in with your cellphone, it should be star nine to use the hand raise feature?
Pastor?
Reese Wokerson.
For the record.
Or Reese Wokerson, fourteen twenty Vivian Street, Gray City of Plainfield, New Jersey. Y'all know who I am. I know who some, I know who y'all are. I have pretty decent relationships with some of you. And I would like to think that y'all have the decency integrity not to let something like this pass. And I hold political or personal retribution. And I hope that y'all exhibit extreme character and proceed with caution and not mess with people like this is wrong. This is truly undiplomatic. The mayor speaks about democracy, but this is not democracy right here. This ordinance seems more like dictatorship. And I will hope that y'all listen to what the people are saying, listen to public outcry and do the right thing about the people and not do the right thing by someone who may be looking at things in a personal manner. That's my comment. That's all I got to say. I'm going to trust that y'all make the right decision on tonight. Y'all be blessed.
Name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Kelly Newsom. I reside at fifteen one oh two Diamond Court in Watchon, New Jersey. I've been an employee for the city of Plainfield since two thousand and one. And I really just, I guess I'm just baffled that we are here again at this table discussing this. Back in two thousand and nineteen, when us losing our jobs were on the table, I thought this was already dealt with and to see we're back here again. And I just don't understand why, you know? Even through this pandemic, right, a lot of the city employees had the convenience of being home, you know, being safe, right? But we, the dispatchers and the police officers, we were feverishly working through the whole pandemic, right? Putting our lives at risk, right? We're going out to work, right? We're going to the risk, right? We putting our lives at risk, going to work, right? When everybody else had the pleasure of being able to be home, right? But because we have a loyalty to the people, we didn't think twice about it. And I think it's mind-boggling of where you guys' loyalty to us is at. You know, you giving up your power to one person. You all took an individual oath to stand for the people and not just for one person. You know what I'm saying? Your loyalty should be to the people, not to just one person. And I just want you to, I just want to say, even though you may not be affected by this, think about if it was one of your immediate family members that was on the receiving end of how would you feel about it? How would you feel if this was one of your family members having to worry if they're going to have a job tomorrow? I just hope you think wisely, you know, and think about the people and not just this one person. Thank you for this opportunity to have us on.
Thank you, Kelly. Do you have anyone else?
No, currently there's no one else with their hand raised. Oh, wait, just as I keep saying no.
Joel Mercado, ten eighteen West Front Street. Good evening, council members. I just want to reiterate, that's what everyone else was saying, the importance of checks and balances. And I hope you guys keep that in mind when you guys vote today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mercado. Okay, seeing no additional members of the public, have a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposition or abstentions? Okay, public hearing is now closed.
Council President?
Yes.
Could I speak for a second just to clarify some of the comments that were made and to answer some of the questions?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, so in a couple of those comments, there were, there was mention of imminent layoffs or at least implication of imminent layoffs. So first off, first off the bat, I just want to clarify that there is an MOU in place between the city and every union, every single union, that there will be no layoffs in two thousand twenty-one. So there are no imminent layoffs. I want to make that very clear, which is one of the reasons why we were bringing it at this time because this is a time where there is no threat of layoffs. No layoffs are coming this year. You have our signature a hundred percent that that document has gone through. The second thing is there have been a few comments about no checks and balances and one person making all of the decisions. So as the personnel director and the BA, I want to speak on that because that's certainly not the case. We are governed by the Civil Service Commission and we do nothing without their approval. If this is to pass, what will happen is if the day comes where for reasons of economy and efficiency, it makes sense for the city to do a layoff, the business administrator would write a layoff plan and that goes to the Civil Service Commission. The civil, the plan has to completely lay out every dollar that will be saved, every reason that we're doing this. Civil Service Commission will take thirty days and they will review that plan. They will decide, not the mayor, the Civil Service Commission will decide if yes, this is a legitimate plan that will save money and make sense for the city or no, it doesn't. At that time, they'll send us a letter informing us, yes, go ahead or no, don't. We then send a letter to employees notifying them, giving them forty-five days notice of what is happening. Employees then have a right to appeal this with the Civil Service Commission. So there is an appeals process even after the checks and ballots of the Civil Service Commission, making sure that this is taking place in good faith and everything is kosher. So then employees, even then, they can appeal. So I want to make sure everyone's aware that all of those checks and balances are in place, which is why most, not all, but most municipalities do not involve the governing body in a layoff because of the obvious conflict of interest. So that is, that's why the civil service is there. Civil service is there to protect employees. And this is not giving the mayor full rein over layoffs by any means. There is no way to circumvent the civil service process. The second thing I want to mention is that employees, most employees know that they have permanency with civil service, which provides them with bumping rights. There is no way to do a targeted layoff. I hear a lot of concerns about the word vendetta and last time the word retaliation. There is no way to do a targeted layoff plan. That does not exist. Employees have permanency in their titles. And the way that a layoff works is you cannot remove a permanent employee. First, you have to remove all of your provisional employees. And after that, then you can start with permanent employees and it goes by seniority. They can bump down into lower titles. There is no way to target anybody. So all of this, we are not the first municipality to face this problem. And civil service has been doing this for decades. They have all of these protections in place for employees. All we are, we're not getting rid of any of that. All we are doing is removing the council from the piece of the puzzle to remove this conflict of interest. And to speak to one of the comments about why at this time, the reason why is because at this time, there is no threat of layoffs. We have an MOU in place. We have no, we have an obligation not to do layoffs. So this is actually the right time to do it. And I hope that that clarifies a lot of what people are confused about or not understanding. Um and David, do you have anything you want to add?
Well, I I'd just like to mention, there's been some talk of the charter and its in its role that it plays in this discussion. Section three point five of the charter lays out the rule, the responsibilities and authorities of the mayor. And it specifically gives the appointment and removal power to the mayor. It does not, nowhere within the charter is there any mention of a personnel function for the council, except it may remove individuals for cause. A layoff is not for cause. So the car, the charter was very clear. It gave an authority to the council for removal, but only in a limited sense, in limited instance where it was for cause. So when we look at the charter, we see that the day-to-day functions fall squarely with the mayor. We see that the council has a legislative function. It has a budgetary function, which can also act as a checks, as a check and balance against the the administration. But what it doesn't have is any personnel function when it comes to removal not for cause, which would be a layoff. So the charter is clear that the personnel function of submitting a layoff plan to the state would be that of the mayor. And the only, the the most analogous case with regard to this issue was challenged in Hillside. Now, Hillside is a mayor council form of government. And although we are a charter form of government, we are most akin to a strong mayor council form of government. In that specific case, the court held that the personnel day-to-day function fell to the mayor, and the mayor did not need the council to submit a layoff plan. I'm I'm sorry, the the mayor did not submit the layoff plan to the council prior to the submission to the uh Civil Service Commission. So if we look at our charter, we look at existing case law, what we are asking of the of the council today is in line with all of that. Happy to answer any questions. Thanks, Council President.
Thank you. For the explanation, counselor. Right, all right. So I, you know, I know this is a a hot, uh an important issue to many. So I'm also gonna allow the council colleagues, if they like, uh to uh opine or give their perspective uh if they wish. I'm scanning the screen to see who would like to speak, if anyone.
Council President, I have a question.
Yes.
Um so BA Levinson spoke of a conflict of interest by having the council uh involved in this process. So um if she or Corporation Council kind of explain what the conflict of interest is, is my first question. And then my second question is, uh Corporation Council talks about the charter lining up with the ordinance and how something similar happened to Hillside and the court's rule that it was within the purview of the administration to do this. But with any ordinance or resolution, if this was illegal or not correct, wouldn't it be null and void uh when the charter was changed anyway? So why is it if it's correct, we still have to go through this ordinance change? Um so those are just my two questions.
Abby, you want to take the first one? I'll take the second one?
Perfect. So the conflict is that it's hard for you to vote for a layoff that's gonna impact your constituents. These are people that vote for you. These are people that you know, you're not gonna want to get up on the mic and vote yes to lay them off of their jobs. Those are votes for you. So by nature of of the the need for votes, it becomes a conflict.
Okay, so before uh you answer that second question, I think that would be with every decision that we make. Um it would be, it would be considered a conflict of interest in your example because every decision we make affects residents and every decision we make can possibly affect how people vote for us. Um so I just think that your argument, um it just, that's the nature of what we do as council people. No matter what decision we make, there we run the risk that people won't agree with us. And we run the risk that if we run again um for the election, they may not vote with us because of the decisions that we made. I don't think that is a valid point for why we should change this ordinance.
You may not think it's valid, but it is human nature.
Could I also address that, Councilwoman Davis? What what we have seen in in prior layoff proposals to council is that when we, when the administration has come forward with a comprehensive plan to save the taxpayers, at a council meeting, all we hear are the affected employees. And you don't hear from John Q taxpayer uh when it comes to these issues. So it's very difficult to weigh the taxpayers' concerns when all you're hearing are the affected employees. And we've seen layoff plans that have saved the city millions of dollars not be uh adopted simply because of the human element of family members standing in front of the council. And that's of grave concern. Secondly, to your question on why and why the uh why this ordinance was not challenged, Hillside is a mayor council form of government. I'm not saying that our ordinance is in itself, on its face, illegal. What I'm saying is, is that if you look at our charter, it is much, it it is more appropriate that our cat, that the the uh that the um it is, it is more appropriate that the function of layoff belong to the mayor and not be a council manic function, just by reading the charter on its face. And I use the Hillside case for what we call not binding authority but persuasive authority. It gives us a sense of what the law ought to be. So I'm not saying that it's, if if it was on its face is legal, we wouldn't even be here having this conversation. But if we look at our charter and we look appropriately as, where does this responsibility appropriately lie? Our charter gives us clear guidance. Our charter tells us that unless it's for cause, the removal power belongs to the mayor in our form of government.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman?
Um so I just, you know, I I want to touch on Ms. Levinson's comment about the conflict of interest because everything we do has a conflict of interest, as as uh Councilwoman Davis said. And and to say that human nature gets in the way of certain things, they get in the way of a lot of things. Um so so that on its, on its face is is just, you know, more of an emotional comment um to to add some sort of additional element to this that's just non-existent. I mean, there are, there are individuals on this panel who have voted to rate, voted to raise fees. There are people on this panel who have voted to increase salaries for individuals and cost taxpayers money. So, you know, we do things all the time um facing the public and and, you know, had catch their ire when we vote for redevelopment plans and pilots. I mean, if you don't think that that isn't something that gets into the taxpayers' pockets, then, you know, you you gotta be kidding. So, uh you know, that that on its face is ridiculous. And I think that that Mr. Mancello's point that this is kind of, is not illegal, which is why when he answered Ms. Davis, that it hasn't been changed automatically on its face because it's not illegal. This is something that was done in nineteen sixty-nine. Um it's been in place for a long time. There have been successful layoff plans that have gone through this process. There have been unsuccessful ones. I think one of the really important things that when we do this is that, one, it, we we have some transparency to the public. This is not a very transparent administration. So with the administration having to present it to council and review and explain how services are gonna continue with layoffs, et cetera, that's very important. The services are the most important thing to the residents. Um and those are the complaints we hear about all the time is is the the, you know, issues with services. So it's important for the council in kind of an oversight role. Uh we have various committees with different, you know, areas of of the uh city government that we're on. And I think it's important that we're aware of what's gonna change, what the plan is, how functions will be um taken over by existing personnel or eliminated or put handled through technology or whatever it is to make sure that we don't have any blips in the process. I think it is extremely important to keep the conflict. Um by the way, that that Ms. Levinson said, I, you know, the mayor gets elected too. So he would have a conflict as well because he's making these decisions um himself. I think when you put the council and the mayor in it together, one, they can own the whole process if it goes through. They can also deal with any lawsuits that was that come as a result instead of having the council having to approve any possible settlements or costs incurred for something that they didn't have any involvement in. Uh additionally, there there is no a government body that gives up any authority that it has. They're just, it just doesn't happen. Um and I, and I think for for this council to give up that authority that's been in place since nineteen sixty-nine and it's had multiple layoff uh proposals come through and and resulting both actual layoffs and then being declined. I I think this is, this is a problem looking for us, uh this is a solution looking for a problem. This isn't, this isn't a thing. And I think that it protects the the citizens for, with the services, making sure that we're watching and making sure that the services continue. It protects their tax dollars from any settlements, legal fees, et cetera. And I think quite honestly, it protects the mayor as well because the council would be on board with it if one were approved. So I I think if the issue is that this should not be allowed and we want to use the Hillside thing, then the mayor should probably take the council to court and and go that way and we'll hire our own attorney. I honestly think that that Mr. Mancello's having to unfortunately kind of serve two bosses here because he is the the council to the city council and he's the council to the administration. Um can't really serve both well with this issue. And I think that any attorney that was representing just the council would say, you don't give up authority that you have. I think the additionally, for example, the the municipality tends to take authorities that they don't have. Um for example, a good number of people on this panel have city cars that have not, they have not been approved to use, which comes from the council in four plus years. So they take privileges on their own that with there are authorities that are granted to this body. So I think that any council member on here that votes to give up this authority just on that basic premise that you don't give up authority that you have would be a fool, absolute fool. And I, and I think that that any legislator in the country would like be mind-boggled at the fact that you would give up an authority, absolutely mind-boggled.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council members wish to speak on ordinance? I don't see any. I'll give my thoughts on uh what I see here. I, there's the conflict of interest, you know, like Councilwoman Davis and and Councilman McCray. I I I agree that that, you know, we we all uh will have to make decisions that.
That's McKenna.
Who did I say? Davis and who else?
McCray.
What McCray?
Like, okay, Mick, Mick, Mick McKenna. Thanks for the correction. Um I I, you know, we all make decisions that that are difficult and would cost us votes. So, you know, that that kind of is what it is, and it's part and parcel with the job. But but there were some uh points that I thought were compelling made by our our counselor. You know, certainly one with the charter placing the administration functions with the mayor. Uh also in terms of what our our BA indicated, uh the protections of the civil service born, uh the procedure that's outlined there where the 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 employees uh do have a process where they could appeal uh if they were, felt like they were uh improperly targeted or specifically targeted. Although um she also gave, you know, she also spoke at length about how it's extremely difficult to target individuals when it comes to a layoff plan. And I know, I'm aware that um that part of this, it seems to stem from fear of individuals that that there could be retaliation from from an election. Uh I mean, that 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 it pretty much is what it is. Uh, you know, I I I can tell that that is 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 a cloud over this entire issue. You know, but knowing that specific individuals cannot be targeted is something that that uh is important for me. Uh because I wouldn't be um wanting to take part in any retaliation uh after an, after an election. Uh so, but it's, but it's important that that's in place. Uh but I also think that the the just the uh, I won't call it, it, I thought the the point regarding the taxpayers versus affected employees is something that's that's worth talking about, uh is is worth uh serious consideration as well. Uh cuz cuz there will be instances where taxpayers could save a tremendous amount, uh but effective employees uh are able to use the council meet meeting to perhaps sway council members uh or not regarding their position and not save uh the city money. So I mean, I I I could understand that argument. And just uh to to address Mr. White, he said, what what's changed now? I mean, this, this is a different situation. I mean, it, because there isn't a layoff imminent, it 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 does make it easier uh for me to 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 vote for this change at this time. To be candid, when when there was the layoff of uh a proposed layoff as well as giving up our power, uh and I heard from the members of the dispatch and uh amongst them were single mothers uh and being raised by a single mother, uh and hearing that single mothers could lose their jobs. It it, you know, that that's something I would always pull out my heart, heartstrings and there's no way I could have uh that if it was my uh choice, that I could have voted for something like that, that that, you know, just because of of that human element, you know? But that, but that was then, you know, and 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 now we're in a a different circumstance. Employed, I've heard more about the intent protection that employees have. Uh and also um that there's a memorandum in place that there be no layoffs in 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 two thousand and twenty-one. Uh it it just presents a different scenario, you know? So for me, that's why um I I thought at least that, you know, this this ordinance deserved to be put placed on the agenda. As Council President, I recognize that, you know, I I'm responsible whether something even makes it uh to this this point. Uh and I, you know, thought it's important that we hear from the community, from the council members, from the administration regarding this issue and deliberating one way or the other. You know, I think that it's it's something that um that a discussion uh in public forum would would be useful and important. Okay, so um we've closed public hearing. Uh so I am now going to ask for a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage. And if adopted, shall be published as required by law.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, clerk, can I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis?
No.
Council McKenna?
No.
Council McCray?
Ooh, number one, yes.
Councilwoman Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welch?
Yes.
Vice President Good? Can't hear you on mute.
Sorry about that, yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Five in favor to oppose MC twenty twenty-one twenty-six has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Thank you, clerk. Please read MC twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC twenty twenty-one twenty-seven is the ordinance adopting the block two thirty-one and two thirty-three redevelopment plan dated June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. It's hereby certified that notice of the public hearing on this ordinance is published in the Courier-News on July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one.
For is now open, any member of the public would like to speak on this ordinance? Hearing and seeing none, uh entertain a motion and a second to close public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, public hearing is now closed. Uh may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage? And if adopted, this ordinance shall be published as required by law.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis?
No.
McKenna? Uh no, and let me-
Uh, no, and let me just add, since we didn't have comment period, that the bulk standards on this are out of whack, in particular the parking, so no.
McCray.
Yes.
Mills Ransom.
Yes.
Welch.
Yes.
Vice President Good.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Five in favor to oppose MC twenty twenty one twenty seven has been adopted on second reading.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move to public comments, limited resolutions, motions and ordinances to be introduced on first reading. Total of thirty minutes has been allocated for this. If you wish to be heard, hit the hand icon, it'll be unmuted, give your name and address for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes, the floor is now open.
Also, as a reminder, if you dialed in by cell phone, it is star nine to raise your hand.
Okay, Nancy P.
Hi, can you hear me?
We, yes.
Okay, Nancy P. for eleven twenty nine Merrill Avenue. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Mills Ransom for our two forty seven. About the countless contributions of the Amali family to the city of Plainfield. They were early residents of the. Of Albert Street, my sister used to babysit their children years ago, then they later moved. Towards Cedar Brook Park, they've done so much for this community. They do the food program at Saint Mary's that feed the homeless. And they do multiple other contributions, and I really appreciate Councilwoman Mills Ransom for. Putting forth that or that resolution, thank you very much.
You are welcome. Mr. Morgan, name and address for the record. Unmute.
Darrell Morgan, nine forty three Hillside Avenue. I I was looking, I'm not prepared really to speak, I was looking for the. Ordinance, the paperwork concerning marijuana dispensary, was that dealt with today?
Uh, yes, there is an ordinance that that we just passed. On second reading earlier in the meeting, but if you want to take a look at the ordinance. Just go ahead and. Click on click on that ordinance, you'll you'll see the information if you.
Well, I mean, if it was passed, it's a moot point, so.
It is, but, you know, like I said, I don't want to, I don't mean to go back and forth. But that it it is just, we've passed just what we can. Pass without the state regulatory committee giving us the guidance. Not not just Plainfield, the entire state on how we're going to roll it out fully. So we've done, we've taken initial steps and there's much more to do.
Okay.
Those comments earlier.
I I know. That they uh, they hadn't decided how they was going to divide the monies. Made from. The marijuana through the state, they haven't decided, you know, which where where it would go, who would get more of the county cities there. Would get more than.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Morgan, we appreciate you.
There is no one with their hand raised.
Okay, I'll.
Wait, someone just did, sorry.
Ms. Bludman, name and address for the record.
Yes, hi, this is Victoria David Bluman, I live at two sixteen C. East Seven Street, Plainfield, New Jersey, zero seven zero six zero. I I also was, I'm on this meeting because I also wanted to know about this cannabis business that's about to open up here in Plainfield. Yes, about my concern about it. And, you know, I feel that how it's going to affect the Plainfield because this stuff, that's a lot of stuff that's already going on here. And I understand that there was some kind of shooting over the weekend here, but that's a lot of things that in field. I can benefit from mostly for our young people, maybe it's kind of activity stuff, but I don't know what the stuff cannabis stuff can do. And the smell of it, it kind of annoys me just by passing by where people are smoking it, I know. It's free for them to do it, but. I'm the type of person that I do not smoke nothing at all, you know, like I the kind of work I do for me. Do when I get to work and I smell like that because just by passing. Somebody who's doing the marijuana, it will be very, you know, distracting to me because like I say, I'm not a smoker of nothing at all. And I'm just a plain person, you know, yes. So that's one of my concerns if this marijuana business was to be. Open here in Plainfield, you know, there's a lot of things that can be benefit. For Plainfield, for the people of Plainfield, especially for our youth, because I work in with the Board of Education.
Ms. Blunden. Bless you and, you know, your your personal choice. Just procedurally. The time to speak about marijuana was when we had public comment earlier in the meeting. We'll have any additional items that we're going to discuss regarding marijuana in the additional resolutions, this this thirty minute portion. Is for resolutions and ordinances be being considered this this evening. To be interested in introduced on first reading, so. But your comments were heard. Nonetheless, and we appreciate your input. Although not not sunny, yes, councilman.
Real real quick, I I think just for clarity for the public, because I I think I heard two comments about cannabis business. That we're approving, there's no specific business in any of these, these two ordinances that we did. One just acknowledges that we're participating in the in the cannabis, you know, program with the state, and the other one establishes the zones for it. Where businesses to come in and either want to have a grow house, distribution, retail, et cetera, and it creates those those zones within the city. That's so just for people's own own knowledge, we're not approving a particular store to go in on North Avenue or anything at the moment.
That is factual. That is factual. Okay, hearing and seeing no additional members of the public, entertain a motion and a second to close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions, public hearing is now closed. Okay, we'll move to resolutions, are there any questions for resolutions R two forty six twenty one through R two forty seven dash twenty one? Hearing and seeing none. Uh, may I have a motion, may I have a motion in a second?
Moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions? Those two resolutions are approved. Okay, clerk, read Resolution two forty eight twenty one.
Resolution two forty eight twenty one authorizing advice consent to the reappointment of Jeanette Edgill to the Plainfield Housing Authority.
Questions from council members. Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution is approved.
Resolution two forty nine twenty one authorizing settlement in the matter of David Myers versus City of Plainfield.
Council president, before we do that, can we just combine these three resolutions together?
With the appropriate motion.
Can I make a motion that we combine resolutions two forty nine dash twenty one, two fifty dash twenty one and two fifty one dash twenty one? In one voting block, so we can vote on them together.
I second that, council president.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, Ms. Councilwoman Davis' motion carries. Uh, we now have a motion with those three, clerk, read those three motions and then we'll.
You need a motion and a second on those three.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Those three resolutions are approved.
Resolution two fifty two twenty one authorizing approval to apply and accept. Additional CARES Act grant funds for the reimbursement of COVID nineteen expenses.
Do council colleagues have questions? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution is approved.
Resolution two fifty three authorizing approval to utilize the American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Questions from council members? Motion in a second.
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions? It's approved.
Resolution two fifty four twenty one authorizing approval for the purchase of an alternative electricity supply services.
Questions from council? Motion in a second.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution approved.
Resolution two fifty five twenty one authorizing approval to amend the calendar year twenty twenty one municipal budget. By inserting items of special items of appropriation.
We have questions from council members? Motion in a second, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, we're in two fifty five dash twenty one, Mr. Clerk.
That's correct.
Um, so with the insertion of the UEZ funds. For this resolution, there is another resolution at the bottom. Does that automatically, like, how does that work? So if we approve this one. Then is it just known that we're approving that one as well, or that one has to be approved, like? Just procedurally, how does that work between the two resolutions, inserting the items and then a resolution two eighty one dash twenty one?
I think if I had the same question, are you, so you're saying, how do we put it into? The budget, but yet we then later give approval for them to apply for it?
That is the question.
So the one we're going to give you approval to apply for, you've already applied for it, gotten. And you need to insert it in the budget, so a little awkward, huh?
That is the procedural question, Corporation Counselor, Mr. Clerk. How does that work? Or Mr. West?
I'm going to defer to the Finance Director.
From the Finance Director perspective, we historically and procedurally have to move money. From the UEZ, you know, fund. To a specific program, and this is a, this thirty thousand dollars is for UEZ marketing activities. And in this case, you'll see, as you as you commented, you know, there's going to be a love playing field marketing campaign. But they can't do anything until we set up an appropriation account that can be charged.
Isn't there also the sober?
That's that's to apply and accept, that's a separate.
It's actually in it.
So, okay, so I think my question was, if we approve this resolution. Then we get to two eighty one twenty one. Right, we've already applied the appropriation to the budget. But we haven't voted on whether or not we want to take the money from. The UEZ funds to go to the to go in the budget, but in this resolution, we're applying it to the budget. So is this like a cart before the horse situation?
Well, you can't do. The two eighty one twenty one. Without a certification of funds, so you need the chapter one fifty nine. You know, to insert those funds into the budget before you can actually. Take an action to do a love playing field marketing campaign. You have to add it to the budget, and the process for that is the chapter one fifty nine.
Okay, so this does go first, okay, thank you, I was I was confused about what came first, thank you.
Okay.
Additional questions? Can I have a motion in a second?
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution is approved.
Resolution two fifty six twenty one authorizing judgments due to county tax board judgments.
Questions from council members? Motion in a second.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution approved.
Resolution two fifty seven twenty one authorizing the adjustment in the public bidding threshold.
Questions from council members? Motion in a second.
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution approved.
Resolution two fifty eight twenty one authorizing approval to apply and accept the New Jersey Division of Criminal Justice State Body Armor Grant.
Questions from council members? Motion in a second.
It's moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? This is approved.
Resolution two fifty nine twenty one authorizing approval for the purchase of a high definition CCTV cameras.
Questions from council? Motion and second.
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Approved.
Resolution two sixty twenty one authorizing approval to apply and accept New Jersey sober or get pulled over campaign.
Questions from council members?
Yeah, we we've already gotten the money, right, we have, we're approving, we're we're authorizing. The city to apply for this, but we've already gotten the money, right, because it starts in four days. Anybody?
The answer to that is yes.
Thank you.
Motion and second.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Approved.
Resolution two sixty one twenty one authorizing a contract with absolute fire protection. For the purchase of a telescoping aerial ladder platform apparatus.
Questions from council members? Motion and second.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposition or abstentions? Approved.
Resolution two sixty two twenty one authorizing a contract with absolute fire protection for the purchase of a twenty twenty Ford F three fifty.
Questions from council members?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Uh, where would we be using this truck at? And are we like replacing an older truck with this newer truck?
Director Daphne?
I can speak to this, this is a, this is a fire.
That's a fire.
That's fine, that's right.
I can speak to this in Director Childress's absence, just give me one second, so we're talking about the twenty twenty Ford. Vehicle.
Yes.
Okay, so essentially, we have a trailer that we were awarded from a grant, and we are the only municipality in Union County besides Elizabeth to have this trailer. And what this is, is this is a vehicle, this is the pickup truck that will pull the trailer. So the trailer's no good, well, it's somewhat useful, but you still need the truck to pull the trailer. And this is for, let's say, a building collapse, something like that, where the fire department needs to be on scene for an extended period of time. You would, you would need to have a trailer there, so this is the pickup truck to move the trailer. And we would let other municipalities use it as well as a shared service because only only we have it and Elizabeth has it.
So we don't have any current vehicles in our fleet of fire department vehicles that would be able to pull this. Trailer that we had?
You never had it, we never had a trailer before, this is new.
Right, so what I'm saying is, we don't have any vehicles currently that would be able to pull this trailer. Because I'm just trying to understand the rationale for buying a new truck because we were given a trailer.
We have SUVs, right?
This is a, this is a massive trailer, so the the. This is a pickup truck specifically to pull this trailer.
Based on the gross vehicle weight, remind me, add into that too, and the hitch that's attached to this truck, this is the only type of truck that will pull a type of a trailer.
Yeah, it's not like a trailer that we could just hook up to an SUV.
The gross vehicle weight. The gross vehicle weight.
Madam, Madam BA, can you, would you please?
I wasn't even done with my question before any other council members, uh, started asking questions or adding their two cents to the question that I was asking, because I didn't even mention the SUVs. So if it's okay with the rest of the council, I just want to finish my question before, uh, everybody else jumps in with their question.
Davis, I apologize for interrupting you.
So, what I'm asking, so I get what you're saying, that this is a large trailer. So what I'm asking is, before we spend one hundred thousand dollars to get a new truck for something that was given to us, there are no other vehicles that the fire department already has that can pull this amount of weight of this trailer.
That's correct.
Thank you.
You tell them. Any other one, any other council people, uh, like to chime in on this or ask questions? All right, hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Approved.
Resolution two sixty-three twenty-one authorizing the transfer of a financial agreement between the City of Plainfield, EST Park Madison Urban Renewal LLC.
Any questions from council members?
Yes. Uh, Director Jackson, we see a lot of these transfer of financial agreements, um, between, like, I guess, businesses. Is this a common thing? And, uh, what are the, like, what are the benefits to the city? What are the liabilities to it? Um, and when we transfer it, is there like a vetting of who the new person, um, that the transfer is going to?
So in our agreements, we have this clause, uh, that allows them to transfer uh, the pilot and the redevelopment agreement. And, uh, in that clause, there's a clause that says that it won't be unduly withheld. Uh, so people do make transactions during the life of the agreement, and they may sell their interest or sell that to someone else. Yes, we do do some financial due diligence of the party, uh, that they're selling to. Uh, so that occurs at, uh, different stages during, uh, before we present it to you as council people. In this case, it's a transfer and assignment of a pilot, uh, that, uh, the Park Madison has on the property and has had since two thousand and one. And so there are about ten years left in the pilot. And so in the agreement itself, and which is a standard provision for all of these agreements, is that, uh, you must have council approval to transfer and that it would not be unduly withheld. And so, uh, it is a common thing, if that's the question you're asking, and it's a common clause, uh, that we put into this agree, these agreements. This property is where, um, on, um, Front Street where Dunkin' Donuts and PNC Bank and the like are located. Uh, uh, in terms of they're selling the property to a new developer, uh, in this case, uh, the developer, uh, owns a number of hotel properties. So I'm hoping that they will, uh, be interested in doing some of that here as well. Uh, does that answer your question, Councilwoman?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay.
Council President?
Yes.
Um, so my question on this, when we look at MC twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight, similar concept, it's just before, um, this is the first, that's, that's in the first stages when we're approving a pilot, and it's all the, the detail about the company and their application, et cetera, et cetera. Um, that information is also provided when we transfer the agreements to new entities, who the, who the owners are, what their breakout is of ownership, et cetera.
Uh, yes, we do have ownership information, not to the level that we have it when we set up the initial pilot. But yes, we do have ownership information, uh, related to who the entity is and, uh, their financial wherewithal.
Okay, because you know, there's no way as a person to vote on this, and unfortunately, I, I'd asked the clerk for that. Some of these resolutions mention those as attachments, some do not. And I asked for the attachments. What I got, unfortunately, I think I phrased it incorrectly, um, or insufficiently, is just a copy of the resolution, which doesn't even have names, persons' names on it, has signer, signee for this company, signee for the city. Um, i- if we're gonna make these decisions, we should not just be looking at a resolution with some words on it and a company name. We should be getting the, the detail behind it. So otherwise, it's, there's, there's nothing to look at. It's just words on paper.
Well, what was submitted was, uh, the memo, the resolution, and the assignment and assumption agreement. Uh, we, we do go through these documents in committee, uh, the Economic Development Committee. Uh, the developer, uh, our redevelopment council is here to answer any questions that you may have. They're in the audience.
I think that's great, but when the document, when we get these things, and we have to do this from Friday to Monday, um, and some of them are, are more intense, we should be given the documentation. Um, I think it's great that you work in committee. We also work in a committee of seven, and it's our responsibility to approve these financial agreements for the city. So we should be given documents to actually review it and not just the resolution. That, by the way, these resolutions all read the same way. There's just different LLCs and urban renewals attached to it.
Right. And so you're not approving the financial agreement. You are being asked to approve the transfer of the agreement. So there's, there's a very distinct difference between the two.
No, not, not really. We're being asked to transfer this to another entity to put them on the hook um, for, uh, a pilot that is being subsidized by taxpayers. So yes, we should see information about the entity, not just their name, LLC.
Please, Director Jackson, can we bring him on, please, so that he can?
Uh, yes, uh, the developer is in the audience. Can you come on? If you could raise your hand, what do you need them to do, Aliqua?
I think Monica Veer. I see.
Okay.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry?
Okay, we need to let the developer on, uh, to speak. And I think he's raising his hand in the audience.
No one has their hand currently raised in the audience. What is his name? Do you know his name?
Uh, Jennifer. Jennifer Credidio.
There it is. The hand is now raised. I'm sorry.
Okay, Monica is the person with the hand raised.
Okay, so do you want me to promote it as a panelist, so you could view him as well, or a viewer as well, or just audio?
That would be nice.
Both is nice.
Thank you.
Nice. All right, that's what I'm asking. All right, I'll promote over to a panelist.
Uh, you're on mute.
Um, good evening, council members. My name is Monica Veer. I'm an attorney at Linda Barry, McCormick, Estrabrook and Cooper. I'm the attorney for Westfront Park Urban Renewal LLC, and I'm here with my client, um, who is the owner of that LLC. Mr. Ramenaleg.
Good.
And we're happy to answer any, uh, questions that you have.
Did any, did any, uh, any council members have questions, uh, that they wanted to ask the developer?
Council President, I, I requested, uh, Director Jackson, if she could bring them in because of the nature and the course that the questioning and the, uh, concerns were. And I figured if they came in, then they would, can be able to shed some light. Uh, may not be the proper documentation attached, or so, if someone feels that they don't have the information that, uh, the panelists could, uh, fill those gaps.
And also Jennifer Credidio is here, who can provide, uh, tell you what information was provided, uh, to the city.
Sure, absolutely, Madam Director. Uh, for the record, Jennifer Credidio from McManaman, Scotland and Baumann. We represent the city as Special Redevelopment Council. Um, with respect to the evaluation of transfers, um, we look at, um, transfers a little differently depending on the stage of the project. So here, the project has been operating for, you know, some twenty years almost. Um, so our evaluation at, uh, with respect to a transfer relates to the wherewithal of the transferee to continue to operate that product in a quality manner. Um, their experience in, in similar endeavors, et cetera. Uh, in that instance, we communicated with Ms. Veer on behalf of her client, um, and they provided, you know, their background and their other similar holdings in retail, um, in, um, a variety, a variety of retail businesses, uh, of a significant amount of holdings. And, uh, if you'd like, we can certainly have Ms. Veer or her client run through those for you.
No, that's, I mean, I don't want to sit and go through this word by word and have no documentation. What I'm saying is, those documents or some sort of summary of documents should be provided. Everything you all do is great, but all you're doing is doing a review and, and collecting data from them. We're actually having to vote on it, and all we basically get is a resolution and a minor little memorandum. There's no, there's nothing there behind this. I wouldn't have known the owner's name without him just being introduced. So I think we are the ones voting to transfer it. We should be given documentation to make that decision, not just a resolution and some brief little memorandum that are basically repetitive. We get it, we get it.
Any, any other questions from council members or questions, uh, of the developer? Okay, well, we thank you for popping in, uh, to show your faces and answer a couple of questions. Uh, you can, thanks so much. Okay, uh, so this, this, this project, I believe, is coming from the Union County Improvement Authority, of which I've been a member, uh, a commissioner on. So, uh, I'm gonna recuse myself from, uh, from voting on this since I have been an active member. Uh, so if Council, uh, Vice President Good could handle, uh, the motion, uh, and, you know, calling for the motion in the roll call, and I'm just gonna recuse myself.
Is there a motion for, uh, Resolution two sixty-three dash twenty-one?
Second.
Mr. Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
And Vice President Good?
Yes.
This resolution has passed. Resolution two sixty-four twenty-one authorizing the transfer redevelopment agreement between the City of Plainfield and South Terrill Urban Renewal LLC.
Are there any questions from council members?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Uh, Director Jackson, I know this is very similar to the resolution that we just point, uh, voted on. This Wawa is in the middle of construction. So what happens if a resolution like this isn't approved? Then what happens to the construction that's currently going on now? Does it stop? Does the, uh, current owner have to retain ownership of it? Like, what would be the ramifications if this didn't pass?
Okay, so first of all, let me explain what the resolution is doing. Uh, the Accurate Builders is the developer, and they developed the initial pad, uh, construction for, uh, Wawa. And, uh, Wawa is a tenant on this. So they are transferring the land ownership of the property to another company, uh, that does this on a regular basis with stores like Wawa. And in this case, if you approve it, it just continues as is with the construction on, on the current construction track, uh, which means they will be done by, um, by, uh, Thanksgiving. If you were not to approve this, then Accurate Builders, uh, still has an obligation, uh, to the city to complete this project.
Thank you.
Additional questions from council members? Hearing and seeing no additional questions, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions?
No.
Councilman McKenna with the note, should be noted.
Noted.
And it is approved six one.
Resolution two sixty-five twenty-one declaring an emergency and waiving the estoppel period for ordinance numbers, MC twenty twenty-one twenty-four and MC twenty twenty-one twenty-five.
Questions from council colleagues? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution approved.
But, can I just throw out one little point for public? Because we had so many comments about this before.
For marijuana?
Yeah, the only thing this does is that it does not sit the, the typical number of days before it goes into effect, because legally, we, we need to do something before that period, so this just expedites when it goes into effect.
Court?
Resolution two sixty-six twenty-one authorizing an agreement between the City of Plainfield and Size Up Incorporated.
Questions from council members? Any opposition or abstentions? I'm sorry. Uh, can I have a motion in a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution approved.
Resolution two sixty-seven twenty-one authorizing approval to submit a grant application with Union County for the twenty twenty-one Kids Recreation Trust Fund Grant.
Are there any questions from council members? Motion in a second, please.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposition and or abstentions? Approved.
Resolution two sixty-two one authorizing change order number one and two to Integrity, Integrity Roofing Incorporated.
Any questions from council members?
Yes. Director Daphne, are we sure that this company with this change order is gonna be able to make the next necessary corrections, uh, and fixes to the copula? Um, because while I'm okay with increasing the amount, I just want to make sure that when we increase the amount, they're gonna do the work that we need them to do in order to get this fixed, because we tried to get it fixed before, and then it started leaking again.
Yes, they're gonna do the work they set out to do, and of course, there'll be a two-year warranty and guarantee on the work that's done by them. So this change order is based on the HBC Historical Preservation Commission in terms of the type of mortar to be used, because it's historic. Uh, and the roofing was something extra, because we're removing asbestos from the property. That's the purpose of that. And that they have to come inside the building on a Saturday to do that, or no one's here. That's the purpose of these two change orders on that. And to answer your question, yes, they're looking, they're gonna go through everything, and we have a warranty to make sure that whatever's done is done correctly.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion in a second.
Moved.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Approved.
Resolution two sixty-nine twenty-one authorizing approval for street opening twelve sixty Randolph Road.
Questions from council? Motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any, uh, abstentions? Or opposition? Hearing none, approved.
Resolution two seventy twenty-one authorizing a change order to increase the original contract, Panoni Associates.
Any questions from council members?
I just have one question.
Go right ahead.
Um, how did, how did this not get in the original scope? Because this is, this isn't something new. This would have been something they had to do anyway.
Well, based on all the meetings with the good question, Councilman, based on the meetings with the state and the local store preservation commissions back and forth, a lot of changes were made in terms of some of the portions of Prospect Avenue with the steps and et cetera. So it was back and forth, so the specification had to be changed quite a few times, and there was quite a few meetings being held to address these issues.
So is this money that was already, they've already done it, so now we're paying them for doing the work?
No, this is, uh, uh, in addition to what was done, we had to make quite a few changes to the scope of services over and over again, and had many meetings with the state, the store preservation commission, and local.
But you're speaking in past tense, yet we're giving you money for.
No, we're giving the money for, sorry, this is a change order due to the fact the additional work they had to do during the time to get everything done. They're still working on the project.
So we we approved them to do this, spend this fifteen thousand. We spent this fifteen thousand and now we're, we're out.
No, we're looking to spend it now. We're actually going to get approval now so they can spend to get the fifteen thousand to do the work.
But for the work they already did.
That and the continuation lead them, yes. And we have no choice based on the duration of this project to get it done going back and forth. For the time it was put into for the scope of service and the changes to the project. To meet the demands of the entire historic preservation commission locally and with the state. That's what happened, Councilman.
Thank you, Director. We appreciate you. Any other questions?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Councilman.
So if I'm hearing Director Dabney correctly, I think I'm concerned as to what Councilman McKenna is bringing up. So the work has already been done, but now we're before the council to approve, paying for the work that was already done. So then, if the council was to not approve it, the work has already been done. Is that what's happening or the work hasn't been done? And so we're approving this so they can get paid to do the work.
The work has been and is continuing to be done, has been done and I authorized because it has to be done in order to complete the project. Not the project wouldn't get done. They have to oversee everything with the design. They had to make several changes to the design to get the project to where it is. So the scope of work changed totally, everything in the scope. And I made a professional decision based on the scope that changed. We had to do this to get everything done. But this project, this has been ongoing for most a year or better because of back and forth with the local historic preservation group and the interstate.
So I think now my next question is to the Corporation Council or Mr. West. So if we're coming to the council and the council is in charge of the city's budget, how is it that somebody within the administration can approve for money to be spent, but then come back to the council to get approval for it? Because if I'm understanding Director Dabney correctly, this is, the work has already been done, but now they're coming to us to get the money. So are we creating bills without getting approved?
The work is continuing to be done, with everything, as we go day to day with everything, so.
This is an ongoing project.
Yes, it is.
So there's, there's no past tense in terms of things being done, but it sounds like, you know, that there's a change order and an ongoing project. But let Director West speak to the procedural components.
I'll address this one, yes. Ron, you leaving it for me? You want to talk?
Just volunteered.
Councilwoman Davis, listen, in the midst of a construction project, it is not uncommon that the work has to continue. If there are delays, those delays could be incredibly costly. If Director Dabney makes a professional decision, he can come back at the next available meeting for approval from council. But if he is in a position that could cost the taxpayers even more money, it is within his, you know, it is his professional recommendation that we continue and seek approval at the next available meeting. So I think that's what I'm hearing from Director Dabney, is the case here.
How many meetings have we had since we went, the last time we went to the local historic commission and the state historic commission? Because I know my fellow council colleagues read the the scope here. These are for, these are for state and local historic preservation reviews. So that's already done. Pave the damn road.
So we've had, we've had quite a few meetings between.
No, I'm sorry, how many council meetings have we had since your last state and local historic preservation?
Oh, maybe two, three, between the time, about two or three.
So.
And it was going back and forth with everything and hopefully we want approval we needed, but we had to keep going back to them to get approvals, to get to where we currently are now on Prospect Avenue, make things happen. And that's what happened. And again, I'm just really, that was a professional decision based on what needs to be done. To get this project that was long overdue, that should have been done most, just about a year and a half ago, should have been finished. Due to back and forth with the state and locals, we had to address the issue.
And then it took us three council meetings before you gave us this.
Before we got finished with everything, yes, it took that much time to do everything.
All right.
Any other council members have questions?
I think that, I think that my concern is, like, I understand that there's a timeline and we want work to get done in a timely fashion, right? I get that part. I understand that. I think it goes back to this checks and balances conversation of if the council is in charge of the budget of the city, right, and then we allow the administration to make decisions in their professional discretion about spending money. And then we come back to the council after the money is already spent. What do we need the council to approve the money for because it's already spent? So now, if we vote no to it, we just have outstanding bill. It's not like, oh, the work stops or, oh, we have. Like, this is a small matter, but small matters become big matters, right? So we have concerns, we have legitimate concerns, but the work has already been done and the money has already been spent. And now the city is left with the bill when we could have came back to the council if there are multiple council meetings in between, if I'm understanding this correctly, where we could have talked about this and we could have approved the money. And it's really just the the procedure and how we do things that's really concerning to me, right? This project in the grand scheme of what we're talking about isn't, I'm not, I'm not harping on this one project, but this project is an example of something that can become concerning in the future if I'm understanding how this whole process went.
Let me try offering a slightly different slant when you start talking about lots of meetings. And on the Prospect Avenue construction job, there were lots of community members in addition to the state and local HPC groups that were interested. And it's my understanding that as a result of all of these conversations, the plans resulted in being changed in order to satisfy all parties. And that's before the milling and paving and the roads have been done. The only thing that's been done to date is is the curb. And does that, and that was certainly, you know, intimately tied into, you know, the steps on Prospect and Hillside and everything else. So when you have changes, it requires that plans get changed. And anytime you're dealing with engineers and other professionals, the clock starts ticking when you make changes to a base plan. And so in a construction project, you always budget for contingency. So in a, in a project, there's contingency, Mike.
I, I think the point, the point here is that the, these, this fifteen thousand dollars was for submission to state historic and local historic commissions. That has long been done. I get why it had to be done. I don't think Councilwoman Davis is arguing that point. That the fact is, it was already done. It was already approved by the state, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, which is why the curbs are done. By the way, the aprons are also done and some of the sidewalks as well. There's some issues with the aprons. If anybody from DPW, the engineer's office would like to go over there. A lot of little aprons that are not lined up with people's homes. But I, I think the reality is, this, this was already done a long time ago and we, we were taking a long time to get to council. And, and I agree with Councilwoman Davis, this particular one, fifteen thousand dollars, I get it. I get the point of it. The stairs on Hillside and Prospect perfectly, I get it. We're just, we're, you know, we're kind of getting a little cute with the order of things. And we're, there's this lots of assumption of the council will just, by the way, they typically do just vote for it. Because I don't think anybody read the attachment that this was for documents going to historic committees, which is long done. So I think that's the point.
So the point I was making was that it's not about this project, right? So Director Dabney, I want you to be clear that it's not about this particular project, right? The stairs had to get done. That's fine, but my concern is the spending of money without the approval of council, right? And I understand that we only meet once a month this year, but we can also call emergency council meetings. In emergency council meetings, we can be very specific in our focus and we can have an emergency council meeting to approve spending an extra fifteen thousand dollars. So that is really my concern that we're approving the spending of money when it's not in our purview or our lane to approve the spending of money. So that is my concern, right? This is not a direct reflection on you. I trust your professional decision, your professional opinion about getting projects done. I understand that there's a timeline to get things done in a timely manner because we don't want to just wait. But also, there's a right way and a wrong way to do it. And if the administration, and if we're talking about the charter, which we talked about earlier today, it talks about the spending of money, budgetary oversight, that is in the council's lane. So we want to separate things and we want to make sure that everybody is staying in their own lane. We need to make sure that when we're talking about approving of funds, that we come back to the council meeting, even if that's an emergency meeting, because that is a function of the council. So once again, like I said, we start with small things and we let small things slide. The small things become large things and then there's an exorbitant amount of money spent without council approval because it was in somebody's professional discretion that projects had to continue to get done. So that is the concern that I'm raising with this. I'm going to still vote for it, but we have to think about what we're, the precedent that we're setting by just allowing things like this to slide.
So for future reference, that's what the council wants. I'll hold any project up until we have a vote prior to anything happen. That's not a problem. We can do that.
Director Dabney.
But bear in mind, some projects, no matter what we have to do, because it involves certain types of funding, you have timelines you have to meet to get the projects done. So just bear in mind with that as well.
That's an interesting threat, Mr. Dabney. The reality is that there was so much time going on with this HPC stuff, you could have done this resolution because you know Panoni said we're going to need more money a long time ago. You just slow to the table with this, so.
Director Dabney, Director Dabney.
Yes.
I appreciate your professional opinion, you know, and, you know, ultimately, it's a small order. It's a reasonable change. It's something that was necessary. And I wouldn't like our, our construction projects held up unnecessarily. You know, especially if you make the professional opinion that it should, that it should move forward. You know, I mean, but you know now that this is on the radar of different council members. So if there's something that comes up like this, maybe we need to talk about it, but I think you should continue to do what you're doing. I trust your professional opinion and with that, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Director Dabney. Appreciate you, sir.
Yes.
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
McKenna? McCray?
Yes.
Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Please note for the record that Councilman Welch has left the meeting this evening. Vice President Good?
Yes.
Vice President Hawkeye?
Yes.
This resolution has passed. If I'm in favor, one opposed.
But can I just, a point of order or clarification, Council President? Can we just clarify, were you giving the city authority to spend money if they need to without council approval? Because that's kind of what that sounded like, you were saying, doing what you're doing.
No. No.
Don't want you to, because that would be illegal.
Yeah, that's what I said, no, no.
Resolution two seventy twenty-one authorizing approval to purchase pay station systems. I'm sorry, I skipped Resolution two seventy-one.
Yes.
Resolution two seventy-one twenty-one authorizing a change order for Remington and Vernick Engineers.
Questions from council? Motion in a second.
Both.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposition or abstentions? Approved.
Resolution two seventy-two twenty-one authorizing approval to purchase pay station systems.
Questions from council?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis, please.
I am glad to see that we are getting new pay stations and meters for our parking. It is prob, is a problem currently for people who come to the downtown area. There are so many broken parking meters that's resulting in people getting tickets for parking at those broken meters or people simply choosing not to patronize the businesses because they're in broken meters and they don't want to get a ticket. So I'm glad to see that we are finally getting pay stations. And these will probably take more than just quarters, so that works out for all of us as well. So thank you that this is happening.
Council President, I do have one quick question for Director Dabney. When will we be phasing out the, those antiquated meters altogether?
That's a good question. It's going to take over the next month to two-month period, the transition period to get everything that we need.
Okay, thank you, Director. Appreciate it.
Just a question, in a month or two, we're going to have all these machines in and replacing the old meters?
We're going to slow transition, we're going to start doing that, yes, with the company. We're going to start working on them to move them in and out. And so you know, too, we currently, we currently have five hundred and, five hundred and seven, three hundred and three meters throughout the city. This is going to narrow things down to seventy-seven with the pay stations, et cetera, for the parking spaces. So it's going to narrow down the amount of meters we need to take care of everything. So that's going to be easier for us. It's more than remove them than it is to put them in place because we're only talking about thirty-three as opposed to three hundred and three meters citywide.
Over the next month, you're going to start installing the new ones?
We're going to put the order in once everything's approved and see if they can move within the next month or two to get everything built up for us, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now a motion in a second?
Moved.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Approved.
Resolution two seventy-three twenty-one authorizing approval to purchase a twenty twenty Ford Super Duty W two B long bed crew cab truck.
Questions from council members? Motion in a second?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Approved.
Resolution two seventy-four twenty-one authorizing the submission and the execution of renewal grant agreement with the Department of Human Services Division of Aging.
Questions from council members? Motion in a second?
Moved. Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Approved.
Resolution two seventy-five twenty-one authorizing an application and the execution of a grant agreement with the Union County Arts Program.
Questions from council? Motion in a second?
Moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Approved.
Resolution two seventy-six twenty-one authorizing approval to amend Resolution two forty-five twenty twenty-one to delete a property maintenance lien.
Questions from council?
Council President, can I make a motion to approve our two seventy-six twenty-one and two seventy-seven twenty-one together?
You, yeah, if you get us, yes, make the motion.
Second.
You need a second.
About a second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, those two are together. Now.
Two seventy-six twenty-one and two seventy-seven twenty-one?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Those two are approved.
Two seventy-eight twenty-one authorizing approval to enter into an agreement between the city of Plainfield and the county of Union to utilize Cedar Brook Park to host a music event.
Questions from council members? Motion in a second?
Moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposition or abstentions? Approved.
Council President, I believe the administration is requesting to withdraw Resolution two seventy-nine twenty-one. Is that correct, Director Brown?
That's correct.
So you need a motion to withdraw?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, that's withdrawn.
Resolution two eighty twenty-one authorizing the transfer of a financial agreement and redevelopment agreement between the city of Plainfield and PL six eleven Front Plainfield Urban Renewal LLC.
Questions from council? Motion in a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions?
No.
No vote for Councilman McKenna?
Approved five one, that's council.
That's correct, sorry.
Resolution two eighty-one twenty-one authorizing the request for urban enterprise zone funded, funding to use Love Plainfield Initiative as tool to further economic development efforts for the city.
Questions from council?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Director Clayton Hunt, what are these funds going to be used for? And I asked the administration earlier this week, how will we know whether or not Love Plainfield was successful? Like, I know the goals are to foster community love and support for the city, but what are the measurables to? community love and support for the city, but what are the measurables to know that we have achieved that goal or that we, or that the attitude towards the city has improved because of these efforts?
Okay, so to answer the first part of your question, so um to date with the funds that we had allocated, which is a very small amount, not knowing which way um, what was gonna happen with COVID, if we'd be able to have some of the events that we wanted to have, et cetera. Um, to date, we've used the funds for things like um giveaways, like T-shirts, reusable shopping bags, reusable straws, mugs, and a few other things. Um, and additionally, I'm sure you've seen that we've wrapped the trash cans around town to make them more visible, to encourage people to use them. Um, we've put up some street pole, street pole banners in and around City Hall. And we've spent money on awards for the art competition, the landscape competition. And we're on, an ongoing series we're having right now is the concerts in the plaza on Saturday afternoons. Future plans include uh placing signage on PMU and DPW trucks. You know, as they drive around town, we want people to see them with the Love Plainfield um insignia. We wanna replace eventually the plan is to replace all the street pole banners around the city. Um, uh, placing signage in the parks and playgrounds and other common areas. And we're also planning to partner with um, you know, DPW and PMU to host like a citywide cleanup day as a start, as a kickstart to other cleanup events. Um, we wanna, we're also gonna encourage resident participation through various contests and, you know, free community events. So those are just a few other things that we have, that we would like to do if we get the um approval for the funds. Again, um, we have reached out for um sponsorship. And if we do, we do plan, if we get, you know, sponsors who participate in the program, um, that we will use those funds first. And of, you know, any funds that aren't used from the UEZ transfer will be put back into the UEZ fund.
Um.
Oh yeah, the other part of your question was about uh measure, uh, you know, how do you measure? And um, as I'm sure you know, not everything has hard and fast metrics that you can measure, however. Since we started the um, this initiative, we've seen a lot of people um, you know, using the hashtag Love Plainfield. I think we've seen around the garbage bins like less garbage being left around it. I mean, that's hard to and we're not monitoring every garbage bin around the city every single day. And um, you know, it's not something that's gonna change the attitude overnight. So it's something that you, you know, we hope to see a gradual change and a gradual difference as we move along, and we have these different initiatives. It's really to foster a sense of pride within the residents, civic pride and ownership of the responsibility that, you know, all the residents have. So, I mean, that's, that's as much as I can say as far as meas, um, measurements or, or, or metrics are concerned.
And um, I would like to add to uh the Love Plainfield piece uh from a uh economic development perspective. It is a branding campaign. And that branding ties us together. It also enhances uh the beautification particularly of downtown and the commercial districts to have those trash cans wrapped uh beautifully. So it's encouraging people to think about before they throw trash on the ground, throwing trash into those particular cans. So it is a branding campaign. Uh, with that, we're able to jointly do events with the Sid as well. So uh again, marketing is about branding ourselves as well. And so uh these trash cans, the banners that we see uh in the commercial business district about Love Plainfield, those are the kind of banners you see in other towns and other neighborhoods in their commercial district. So that's my two cents.
Thanks, Director Jackson. And I also wanna add that, we also wanna use this as a tool to drive more business to the um, to the businesses downtown. Uh, through some of the initiatives that we have. We did partner with the Sid and Economic Development on the, you know, the, the food festival that's ongoing now.
And I think, uh, uh, Mr. President, could I just add something?
Sure.
Yeah, I would think um Director Clayton Hunt, that you would talk about the involvement of the students. I thought that was really great to get uh started at that level and have them involved in the campaign for I Love Plainfield and the competition.
Thanks, Councilwoman Mills Ransom. Yes, I briefly touched on it when I mentioned the art competition, but I could have been more specific, yes. So we did involve the students. We had over sixty students who participated in the art competition. Um, and you know, it, it, I thought it was a great motivator for them. They, they expressed um interest in having future uh participating in future um competitions and events like that.
Council President, I'd like to add, add my two cents. In fact, I wanna give a dime now. I, I wanna upgrade that. Uh, Director Hunt, I think this is an awesome campaign. Um, I think, I don't think you could ever go wrong when you add a little bit more pride to where you live. And I think this is going to be explosive for the duration of it, and I hope it lasts for a very long time. It's something that we have never had. And it's very exciting to see it in place. So thank you so much for you and all of those involved.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
So, once again, I wasn't done, but thank you for the twelve cents that was just added uh before I was finished. Um, so Director Clayton, I, I think you did talk about some metrics that can be used as measurables, right? So you talked about the hashtag. So uh like when we talk about metrics, that, that is metrics, right? You talked about how there's not as much litter around those trash cans. So I think those definitely are metrics. Uh, when we talk about the Love Plainfield campaign. And so when we talk about adding additional funds to it, um, those are the type of things that I'm looking for when asking about metrics. Um, I think that there have been some good programs um, that Love Pro, Plainfield has done. I think there are some programs that caused me hesitation when looking to add more funds to the initiative, but I think that there are ways to measure uh what you're talking about. And I think that you did uh mention some of them, but also with UEZ funding, um, I know it has to be in the UEZ zone. So you mentioned a plethora of things, including uh DPW trucks and community cleanups and all of that. So I think I'm really just looking for what is gonna impact the UEZ zone from the things that you talk about to make sure that we are uh being good stewards of these public funds.
And I, I, I think that's back to my comments about branding and about the commercial business district. And uh Director uh Hunt also mentioned uh that there are sponsorships. And so we are getting sponsorships in addition to UEZ funding for the Love Plainfield campaign. And that would certainly support the residential component. But again, uh UEZ, a big part of that is beautification of your commercial district. A big part of UEZ is marketing uh as well as branding. And so wrapping trucks to me is just another way to market Love Plainfield. And so that is people are moving in and around the commercial business district. It does support that effort, and I believe that strongly.
So, within wrapping these trucks, is there any, uh, is there any like requirements that say that we can only use these trucks in the commercial districts? Or are we able to still use them throughout the city after they're being, after they're wrapped?
After they're wrapped, we can still use them throughout the entire city. Uh, we have, uh, our programs, our UEZ funding, I'd just like to add is evaluated and monitored by the state. Uh, we have met our metrics associated with that. Uh, we will be getting additional UEZ funding for twenty twenty-two from the state uh to the tune of about six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars uh for the state uh going forward. Uh, we have to provide a five-year economic development plan for UEZ that's new. Uh, and we do have an economic development element to the master plan. And when you look at things like uh Main Street, New Jersey, UEZ funds, beautification, promotion, all of those things are very important elements to the urban enterprise zone uh that will drive economic development activity. So yes, we're meeting our metrics as it relates to the use of UEZ funds. We're monitored on that. And we are measured uh, uh by the UEZ program itself. Uh, my team and I did interviews uh with the state uh during twenty twenty, and we will continue to do that through twenty twenty-one.
Thank you.
There's no comments from my council members? I, I'll just echo that. I, I, I do appreciate the campaign. Uh, if, if I had it my way, we would probably spend double, uh, you know, i- in terms of beautification downtown, it needs a lot of work down there. You know, we, we hear a lot from residents in terms of them wanting more from uh our downtown and wanting, you know, and, and cleanups and so forth. So any campaign that, that, that serves that function, I think is a worthwhile one. But, you know, I agree with my colleagues, you know, we want measurables, we wanna make sure our money's well, well spent. That's uh, that's our role as council people, but but thank you all for your efforts there.
President, I just wanted to add something real quick, though, from the educational component side of that. Effort with uh Director Hunt was saying too, uh, the Love Plainfield, the cleaning up initiative for the properties, maintaining your properties, et cetera, in the downtown. We'll make sure we, we're bound on that, make things better with that. It was not just brandies, the educational component, what they have to maintain in terms of the dumps, the garbage that we see in municipal lots, et cetera, you know, round, you know, around the litter baskets. So that's a major part of it too, that uh this Love Plainfield initiative, I'm gonna touch upon. Okay, because we get a lot of calls from Councilwoman Davis, this is at every quite a bit. And I'm saying how to put the garbage out properly, how to store everything, and that's part of the education component too, that she has the Love Plainfield initiative. So it's gonna be major for us as we move forward in the entire downtown.
Got it. Have a motion in a second?
Both.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Hearing none, it's approved. What was the last one? All right, uh, well, I do want approval to add resolution two eighty-one dash twenty-one authorizing a contract to uh top-line construction for the East Third Street Roadway Improvement Project to the agenda.
That should be two eighty-two.
Two eighty-two, all right. It's two eighty-two dash twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Right, any uh opposition or abstentions? Okay, that resolution is added, and I have a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved. Second.
And I didn't give my, my council colleagues the opportunity to ask questions, so we'll do that now. Hearing and seeing none, I'll uh I'll uh, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Hearing none, it's approved. Okay, we now come to ordinances on first reading. Clerk, read M C twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight by title.
M C twenty twenty-one twenty-eight is an ordinance to the City of Plainfield and the County of Union authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with SRV Plainfield Urban Renewal LLC and SRV Plainfield Two Urban Renewal LLC respectively, and granting a tax exemption.
Any questions from council members?
I just want to say that I am happy to see uh work being done on this area of the city. Um, I spoke with Director Jackson earlier today about some of my concerns about that area, but I'm glad to see that hopefully this spurs other development or this spurs the property owners in that area to take better care of their property. So, thank you.
Any other?
I, I just have uh one comment on this is that I think we're, once again, we're building ourselves up for a huge parking problem. We've got a hundred and ninety-two units going in between these two properties. And there's a hundred and eighty-nine parking spaces, so we're not even one for one. We are, we are down three and we already got a parking problem. So I, I, I just think we're opening ourselves up to, to all sorts of problems with parking.
Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
Second.
Second, clerk, may I have a roll call?
Roll call on M C twenty twenty-one twenty-eight. Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
Cray?
Yes.
Those ransom.
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes.
Council President Hawkeye? Five in favor, one opposed. This ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Thank you. A total of sixty minutes has been allocated for public comments. This evening, each speaker will be allotted five minutes. Uh, if you wish to be heard, hit the hand icon. Uh, give your name and address for the record. The floor is now open. Mr. Morgan?
Good evening. Um, this question is for the city clerk. Uh, my question is, where are the traffic impact studies for each individual project on South Avenue located, including the Wawa and the Quinn? With respect to emergency services, where are they located for our review?
Whoever has an answer to that, once we conclude public comment for everybody, uh, I'll allow you to uh, to answer Mr. Morgan's question. So thank you for your question. We're just gonna hold it towards, towards the end to give all the public an opportunity to chime in at this time. Thanks, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you.
Name and address for the record. Screen says John. Unmute yourself, Mr. John. Okay, I think John may be having technical difficulty, so we'll, we'll move on to the next participant. I'm Miss Mango Horton. You may speak. Name and address for the record, please.
Nicole Mango Horton, thirteen sixty-six Saint Nicholas Boulevard. Um, I just wanted to comment on uh the economic development projects that we have going through the city that have been going on for a number of years now. I do wanna say first and foremost that I am happy to see um, that we are putting a lot of effort into redeveloping areas of the city, especially areas um in the city that have been blighted and have been um downtrodden for quite a few years. Um, my concern is the fact that um we're doing a lot of uh mixed-use buildings where we have commercial space on the bottom floors. And we're putting in a number of residential units uh on the upper floors. And every single project, it seems that we're doing now, is coming with a long-term, excuse me, a long-term tax exemption. Um, thirty years is a long time, and if we continue um to do every economic development project um with a tur, a thirty-year tax exemption, we are going to create an imbalance in the tax base for who's actually paying taxes in the city. Um, and I, part of the purpose, I believe, of redevelopment is to be able to spread the tax base so that you can ultimately lower taxes for all your residents and still be able to provide um the services that are expected. So I don't know what kind of um, what kind of analysis goes into determining what the long-term effect is going to be if we continue to develop uh so many areas in the city with such long uh tax exemptions. Um, but I would like to, you know, know if that information is available for us as residents. Um, because I think we're going to end up with um, you know, possibly one-third of the city not paying taxes. Um, and the entire city is supported by, um, you know, homeowners and existing businesses. Thank you.
Next, any question, any comments? Smith, name and address for the record.
Hi, Cynthia Smith, fourteen thirty-one Cooler Street. Um, speaking as uh, I guess a Plainfield resident this time, because you guys have already voted on the ordinance where I was speaking. where I was speaking as the Union President. I just want to say, and it's been, you know, a while since you all voted on it, so a lot has happened in the meeting. But, so I may seem like I'm a little all over the place, but bear with me. I just want to say that I wish that the comments and conversation concerning that ordinance that was passed tonight, given the power of sole authority to the mayor of La, had been discussed and had conversation on on the first reading of the ordinance. This way, when when the people that wanted to come speak against it or add comments, they could have had some time to research what was being said to them. I want to thank Councilwoman Ashley Davis. You asked good questions, I'm watching you tonight, and keep continuing to do what you do, you're shining. I want to also thank Councilman Sean McKenna because he voted no the first time, but he took this thirty-day period to do some research and he came back with a no vote as well this time. I also want to say that was going to liken this to a scenario. You see a car and it's used and you're out to purchase a used vehicle. One of them is more shiny than the other one. So it looks good to you, so you purchase it, but you don't know what's wrong with that car until you start driving and then you find it's no good at all. We had a layoff before where we got rid of our, you know, plane, and and now animal control and they outsourced it. I see now that we now have a part-time person working back in animal control. Okay, so sometimes what you think upfront is not what it is and then you have to come back and backtrack later, okay? Another thing I wanted to say is that the day after that last meeting, July the twelfth, the next day after that, that was my birthday, I turned sixty years old. And I said all that to say this, a lot of times when you get older, you know, you start to speak your mind. And so I heard tonight Councilman Hockaday state that, you know, he wouldn't have voted for what 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 drove his decision the last time was that there were single mothers that was on that layoff plan, so that drove his decision. Well, Councilman Hockaday, we had thirty-nine people get laid off one time in a year and there was all types of single parents, all types of employees with different backgrounds and different things going on in their lives. So to be a councilperson and say that you're swayed by what's right based on who who it is, that's a wrong thing. I think you're saying those things just to make the the administration feel good by adding that because that's what was said the last time that you put a motion into it. You're elected to govern, not not governed by your emotions, okay? Last thing I want to say to you guys is this, they, someone was saying something about retaliation. I don't know if it's true, I don't know if it's not. Someone mentioned that to me on Friday. I really don't care at this point because, like I said to you, I'm sixty years old. So retirement is is in 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 not my rearview mirror, but it's in my front mirror. So I'm looking at it real soon. But I hope that with all that I brought to the table, running the division from two thousand and six to now, I think that saved the city of Plainfield a lot of money, okay? Because when other in, other towns come and other engineers come and they find out that one person works in that division doing that work that in every other town they go to, they have five or six employees there. I think that says a lot about how you have employees there that have done a lot, have committed a lot and have worked a lot of years for the city of Plainfield. And a lot of them, they don't even get a thank you, a pat on your back or or even ever a raise, okay? When I put my retirement papers in, I hope that someone say, you know what, Cynthia? You did such a great job, we want to pay you twenty thousand dollars for you to stay. Please don't go. Because I hear that's what you do in other cases. Thank you all and have a good night.
Ms. Coons, name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. Sharice Coons, one forty-one McKinley Place in Plainfield. I just have a couple of items that I've jotted down, want to discuss with the council tonight. First, I'd like to thank the police director for moving forward with the four-way stop sign on East Second and Johnston Avenue. I had been lobbying for that four-way sign for some time. You know, I know that, you know, there were a couple of folks who were against that, but I can tell you that, you know, as someone who lives on McKinley Place, which is a little street right after Johnston Avenue, the fact that it is slowing down the traffic as it is coming up East Second Street, you know, has been great for me. So I just want to thank you for making sure that that four-way stop sign happens. The next item for me is something that I've said on on many council meetings in the past, and that is all investment in Plainfield is not good investment in Plainfield. And, you know, I know, you know, I sit in these meetings and I I hear everyone talking about economic development and, you know, the reinvestment in Plainfield and, you know, all of these good things. Now, I hope that, you know, in all of this investing that we're doing in the city, that we're also looking in the mirror at those folks who have previously invested in Plainfield and making sure that they're taking care of their properties and and maintaining their properties. And, you know, these new investors are not going to come in to Plainfield, you know, get these tax exemptions and then abandon the city and and leave it with poorly maintained properties. I know that, not sure how many of you go to Pete's Fish Market down on East Second Street, but I was down there probably about a week ago. And I don't know how many of you have seen that parking lot back there. That parking lot is a hazard zone back there. And, you know, I I'm hoping that, you know, as the city is looking at bringing new folks to invest in the city, that they're also looking at, you know, folks who have come into the city and invested in the city and and make and are making sure that they're taking care of and upkeeping the properties that they already have in the city. So I would, the the city, I don't know who, the inspections department, you guys need to take a look at that parking lot because that parking lot is an absolute mess back there. Another thing on the the Love Plainfield Initiative, I think that's a great initiative. You know, definitely hope that that takes off because I, I mean, I see so much litter around the around the city that is that is is horrible. I mean, I just see folks just throw throw trash. It's like there there is an unlove for Plainfield. So I'm hoping that this initiative, you know, can can take hold and, you know, folks will start caring about the city and and I won't, it's not everyone, that folks who do litter and and don't love the city will start loving the city again. That's all that I have to say and thank you guys so much for listening.
Thank you. I'm going to rename and address for the record.
Yes, Marie and Sarah, what time have you? A couple of the things tonight were interesting and probably deal with almost every subject that the council needs to deal with. One is that you don't always hear from the people who either don't know about an issue or perhaps just don't have the vested interest in it. I noticed that the county of Union will, or at least they think they will be coming in again to Cedar Park, Greenbrook Park and Cushing Basin for yet another deer kill this year. It was my understanding it's a council decision. One of the other things you spoke about tonight was one person does not make decisions. However, if these contracts have been entered already and somewhere one person did make a decision. This issue isn't going to go away. And as more people learn about the violence and inhumanity of the kill of the crossbow, it's going to become a difficult to love Plainfield situation. Two years ago, we talked about coordinating with Mr. Brown and someone from the council to explore humane ways of mitigating complaints from residents. It seems that all data which keeps coming in each year points to the fact that the reasons given for this kill just are false. It's totally false in from information. So one question, have you, is the council aware that you've entered into a contract for a kill again this year? And two, will the council consider once again assigning one person? Again, I only mentioned Mr. Brown because that's what we talked about. That's actually what was resolved in twenty nineteen unanimously by your council. Second thing, traffic. I I think I'm seeing some improvement in speeders, but not not altogether a great improvement. I really think we need to make a concentrated effort on traffic situations, especially on our main streets in Plainfield because the speeding is really out there. And one of the excuses the sports hunters use for killing is traffic or encounters with deer. In fact, in the past ten months, there have been seven deer versus auto incidents in Plainfield, seven, single-digit, and something like twenty-eight, four times the amount pedestrian versus auto. So we need to look at facts. I appreciate the meeting. I appreciate hearing the answer to my question. And I so much appreciate working with someone on going forward with peaceful Plainfield and love Plainfield. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you for your comments and input as always. Ms. Cooper, name and address for the record.
Good evening, Sam Sekita Cooper, known to you as Sam, Plainfield business owner. I can't believe that I haven't heard through this entire city council call the wonderfulness that the Plainfield Food Truck Festival was. I really, really am shocked that no one has said anything. I thought it was amazing. I thoroughly enjoyed seeing people come out, even the people that were behind the mask. It was blazing hot, but, you know, there were definitely vendors there for you to get your lemonade, your wings and so forth. So kudos to the Sid and the city and whomever worked on that project to have all of that come together to kick off Restaurant Week in Plainfield. So I wanted to start with that before I go into the rest of the stuff, but I truly am hoping to see so much more of that. I would love for that to be an annual thing. Maybe we can have something like that again for the end of the summer. Maybe we can move it around. I know that the locations are truly limited in order to be able to do that, but I really just wanted to say it was an awesome event and I'm glad to see the folks came out. Now, as it pertains to that situation when it came to parking and the parking meters, I happened to notice that alongside the Union County College and East Third, there were bags over the meters. So I may have missed it where we said that there's something going on with that. So if someone can speak to that, that would be great. But all the bags weren't even tied on, so it was a little weird. I'm not really sure what that was about. And when you think about, you know, now we're going to have the parking meters, I'm glad that you guys spoke about that because I have actually witnessed putting money in meter not registering. So hopefully another month or two, we'll be done with that and we'll be up to, you know, this century with having a paddy station as most surrounding cities already have. So let's see. Four-way stop, the four-way stop that's on the east end, that is East Second and Johnston, I believe. If possible, can we put some striping leading to the stop signs specifically, especially on the eastbound side as you approach? Because the machine that alerts or the traffic alert machine, I haven't been that way lately, but the last time I saw it, it was all the way on Berkman. There's like a half a mile before you get to Johnston. So people may have forgotten that you said there was a change in traffic pattern, not to mention the stop signs aren't blinking. So if that's something that we could consider to do that doesn't cost us a lot of money, the goal here is to save lives. So hopefully that's in the budget for us to do some striping to say that a stop sign is approaching. I've seen it in other towns, similar to how we wrote Black Lives Matter on certain streets. If we could do that in white with the approaching stop signs, maybe that would help, just a suggestion. Additionally, I have, oh, I'm sorry, I also wanted to say National Night Out was awesome, too. That was nice, a lot of people came out. Wasn't that hot that day, there was music, there were kids, you had the classic cars. I loved seeing everyone come together and come out. I am hoping that those of us who love Plainfield as much as I do will share those good stories on their social media pages, will share the goodness that we have. Yes, we have endured some tragedies of late. However, Plainfield does not hold the award for bad news in its town. There are surrounding towns that have just as much going on in their cities, but they do not get as publicized negatively as we do. So I would like to remind us all of the good things, which is what my comments are about. And for the National Night Out, truly, the recreation department did a phenomenal job. So I definitely want to make sure that they are recognized along with the other members that helped to put all of that together. And I believe, oh, lastly, as most of us know, should know, if we are in Plainfield, love Plainfield, coffee box is leaving. For those that are on city council or on this call that are listening, yes, the coffee box will be closing. I believe it is the twenty-second, are their last days. I am extremely saddened to learn of that. Yes, we have other eateries, other coffee places in town, but I do want to say that I am saddened to see Jeff Spellman specifically and his business leave the city as he has done tremendous things for the community. Five years is a great run to have a business in the city of Plainfield. I am hoping to see so many more like that. And if there is anything that could have been done, I would hope that those who had a say-so or maybe an ear to the specific, specific person who is the cause of why he is not here, I would hope that you would have been able to have a conversation and maybe make some legway. But truly, my thoughts tonight are all positive. I'm always wishing you all well. I am always here to assist in any way that I can. I am hoping that we can continue to remain safe so that I can continue to see your faces and take photos with some of you as I was able to at the Food Truck Festival. But again, those are the types of things that will separate us and elevate us back to where we were many years ago. So kudos to you all. So kudos to you all. I hope you all have a great, safe and blessed evening. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Pivavon.
Yes, um, good evening, Nancy Pivavon, 1129 Myrtle Avenue. Um, earlier I spoke about the O'Mallies. I also want to thank um, Councilwoman Mills Ransom for um, um, acknowledging all the work that Pat Fields has done. I've worked with her um, on those uh, projects with Music in the Park and um, she puts her heart and soul into it and I appreciate you recognizing her contributions to the city. Both of, both of those, uh, both of those families are great volunteers and they love Plainfield. So it's nice that you're um, acknowledging people who through the years haven't received um, any compensation, but have done it just because they have loved the town, just like a lot of people that have spoken before me that are here because we love the town. On that note, I also want to, I, I did send you out an email um, and make people aware that um, the small group that's working on the lost fort of the Plainfield. Uh, last week, we were finally able to locate the original deeds um, that were signed by uh, Thomas Jefferson, James Madison, and um, working with a student from NJIT who is going to take those deeds and put them on a current map. So we'll finally, after over 200 years, know exactly where the fort and encampment was encompass, encompass a major portion of the west end of Plainfield, Greenbrook Park specifically. Um, and I think it, it's going to be a great thing for economic development and also for the 250th anniversary of the United States that so many people um, were there. Um, we also re, re, uh, found out that at least 30 to 40 soldiers may be buried somewhere, either on Myrtle Avenue or on the hill in Greenbrook Park. Um, unfortunately, through history, um, the location has been lost and I'd hope that at some point in the future, the city would consider um, at least erecting a sign in their memory and honoring um, the hollowed ground that's in this area. Um, we have found primary source documentation up in the National Park Service, Morristown, that named at least one of the soldiers that was buried there. Um, I have somebody working on trying to uh, get more information on him. We also have a student from uh, Monmouth University who's working on a um, a thesis on the fort. And so hopefully within the next year, uh, six months to a year, we'll be able to give you a, a, a report before city council. We have a Vermeil descendant and also a Drake descendant that is assisting us. And um, I just wanted to give you an update of what's going on. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. All right, hearing and seeing no additional individuals, public comment. Entertain a motion and a second to close public.
Second.
All those in favor.
Hi.
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 Public comment is closed. You had a question?
Council President, before we adjourn, I do want to echo uh, Ms. Cooper's comment um, and really give public kudos to Director Jackson and the Plainfield Sid on the wonderful job that they did on Friday. Um, I know sometimes it seems very easy for us to get on these council meetings and criticize the work that people do or, you know, just not, not even criticize, but really be critical of, of the work people do and the decisions that they make. But I want to say that Director Jackson uh, Friday's event was a great job and thank you so much for putting that on. And I can't wait to see more events from your department in the future like this.
Agreed, agreed. We had a couple of comments, new dorm public comment that I think um, some directors could address. Just want to give them an opportunity to do that.
Okay, Council President, um, I'd like to address a couple of things. One was the question of traffic studies. Uh, traffic studies uh, for projects are done at the planning board level. And so what I mean by that is the planning board can request traffic studies be done as well as our city engineer as part of his project review uh, can request and do request traffic studies. Uh, if you're interested in what those traffic studies say uh, for any given project, you can just go to the Division of Planning and we can make that available for you to look at. Uh, there was a lot about taxes, pilots uh, and investments um, that was discussed. And we did a redevelopment forum a couple of years ago for the public uh, that explained uh, the payments in lieu of taxes and that what we're trying to do is change the mix of the tax burden from the single fam, a single family homeowner to commercial. And so the current ratio in terms of the taxes for the city of Plainfield it is 80/20, probably has improved some uh, since we've done these tax abatements. And so the uh, what we're trying to do is increase the ratio for commercial property owners, whether that is for commercial and retail, mixed-use or residential buildings. And that the tax abatements that we bring to you, unless we say that they're affordable for the most part, uh, bring significantly more dollars uh, to the town than we would get if nothing was done with those properties. So uh, I just wanted to clarify the whole pilot conversation. Anyone who is interested in better understanding uh, the pilots, we provide the mayor, the administration and council with the numbers uh, so they're able to see those. Uh, anytime anyone wants to talk about the benefits of long-term tax exemptions on a community, I will be glad to explain the math. Uh, my number is 973-266-2519. And again, I'm available to talk to anyone at any time about the payments in lieu of taxes and explain what the benefits are to the city of Plainfield. Thank you.
Council President.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening to you and good evening to all. If I may add to what Director Jackson has said.
Absolutely.
I think, I think that it is important to stress the point that she just made about the city realizing more revenues under these pilot agreements than they otherwise would have. Because there is that narrative of misinformation that is fed to the public by some amongst you that the taxpayers are subsidizing these projects. That is totally false. The city under these pilot agreements gets more in revenue than we otherwise would have gotten under conventional tax situation. Not to mention the cost of light, which is far greater. The cost of light is far greater to the city and to homeowners than these development projects. These development projects breathe new life into blighted spaces. One need only take a walk down North Avenue. One need only take a walk down South Avenue. And look at the transformation that has occurred as a result of us deciding to trade light for development and increase revenues, which will flow directly to the bottom line and alleviate the burden of property taxes on our residents. So people need to speak the truth, especially when you are elected to do so and not to spread misinformation. The taxpayers of this city do not subsidize these redevelopment projects. The city realizes more revenues. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, Director, I just wanted to say something.
I think the resident had a question saying about there was covers on Church Street over the meters.
Yes, you can address that. Thank you.
All the meters that aren't working, so we know we're addressing those and if they are loose, we're going to check on them and make sure everything is covered. Until we get the new meters in, yeah, those that aren't working, we're putting red covers open enough now when we have in place. That's with them. So those are covered because they're not working. To be repaired.
Thank you.
Council President, can I just throw this in there as well? Uh, Director Dabney, will someone look into that uh, parking lot issue uh, adjacent to uh?
We just ready to bring that up, Pete's Fish Market.
Yes, yes.
I wrote that down. Yes, we're looking to that tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
Council President, if I may.
Yes, you may.
There was a comment uh, regarding how to access uh, backup information or uh, like resolutions and ordinances early on in the public comments. Uh, if you go to the Plainfield website, uh, plainfieldnj.gov, there's a tab that says city government. If you click on city, city government, there's a tab that says agendas. Uh, once on the agendas, if you click on any of the meetings, there is the uh, the full text of all resolutions and ordinances as well as the backup information. Uh, if you have any issues uh, retrieving any of the backup information, you can always contact my office and we'll walk you through it. The number is 908-753-3222. In addition to that, if there's ever any documentation uh, that you request that is not, or that you're seeking that is not a part of that packet, you could always put in an opere quest, which can also be found on the city clerk's uh, page on the website as well. And uh, you, you'll uh, you'll be provided with that information should that document exist.
Uh, Council President, um, because we are on Zoom, I think that it would be advantageous if the clerk could pull up the city website uh, and just really quickly show people how to get to the agenda and the backup because that was something that was asked multiple times uh, throughout the meeting. I think one of the advantages of having a virtual meeting is the ability to share the screen and show residents in real time how to get there from the homepage of the city website.
Ask and thou shalt receive.
I would correct you on that uh, Council President, but I won't, I won't, don't.
Everyone see my uh?
Proper scripture.
Let's see how it goes.
Make it bigger, all screen.
You see this?
Much better.
Okay, click on city government. There's a tab there that says agendas. Click on agendas. And now click on the meeting. It'll bring you to the tab with all the uh, resolutions and ordinances. And you'll see here that uh, it has all the ordinances and resolutions here and all the applicable attachments.
Thank you.
Great illustration, uh, Mr. Clerk.
All right, well, I thank you all for coming. I'll entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? All right, thank you. Thank you all for the meeting.